Testing, testing, testing.
Order, order. Steve, are you ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Steve, Margaret, let's call this meeting to order. We're convening from closed session. Public report of reportable action taken in closed session pursuant to government code 54957.1.
Mr. Mayor.
John, yeah.
Yeah, I'm John. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Well, shucks. Let's adjourn to the regular meeting at seven o'clock? Seven oh one. All right, now I come back and call the meeting to order again. Good evening and welcome to the City of Mountain House City Council Meeting for Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty five. Stephanie, let's take world call again.
Councilmember Disco.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Harrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Here.
Mayor Sue.
Here. Could I have, oh, no, this is moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. I forgot who led last month, but how about Councilmember Matt Ernest? Disco.
Oh, okay.
Your real name.
Matthew David, isn't it? Isn't that your middle name?
Yes.
Matthew, Matthew David. All right, where are we? Number four is approval of agenda. Can I get, anybody want to make any changes to anything? If not, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
I believe we pulled two items, does it see it?
Please remove seven point three for additional staff work.
All right, now you want to make a motion again?
Motion to approve with a deduction of seven point three.
All right, somebody second?
I second it.
Roll call.
Councilmember Disco.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
Aye.
Mayor Sue.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item five is public comments. I'm supposed to read the following. During general public comment, the public is invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person. The mayor calls. Another one?
Yeah, this is the second one.
The third one?
How many do you have up there already?
Yeah, bring them all. Ms. Carolina Dickinson, Dickinson? You're related to that writer?
Charles. Charles.
Wait, is her mic, her mic needs to, oh, hit the button.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'm here this evening to talk to you about something I found rather shocking in the Mountain House Matters newspaper, and that was that there's nine tennis courts planned and no pickleball courts planned for the new recreational development. We already have tennis courts, and I have a question of has there been a survey done? How often they're used, how much they're used? That it would need nine more tennis courts and no pickleball courts? And I looked at the map, and it looked to me like there was two tennis courts kind of off by themselves, and they would be perfect not to build and to build four pickleball courts in that same space. I know tennis is a very valuable and traditional sport. I know our mayor is very interested in it, and I caduce for you. But pickleball is a rising sport, and it's not going to go away. Our young people are playing it, and our old people are playing it and people in between. But it really helps the older people who can no longer play tennis because of their knees or their shoulders or their knee, whatever parts of their bodies. So I am urging you to relook at that development and seriously take pickleball into consideration before it's built, all right? And I have a, wow, that was a minute and thirty seconds, okay. My other concern, and I did bring this up once before, is you now have a lot of power, you five people, to decide if new developments, if those developers have to make the streets wide enough for bike lanes. I mean, I know what's been gone by the county, and they let it slide, and that's our county. But you guys have power to keep our kids from being hurt, and they are being hurt. You know that, and it's your responsibility to make this a safe community. Forty-six seconds, and the other thing is the people over at Lammersville have to truck their kids all the way to Mountain House High School because there is no safe way for them to get here. Thank you.
Are we allowed to briefly respond?
Steve Kennedy.
I can briefly respond that we're going to have an item on pickleball at the next meeting, and I will personally follow up with you on the bike lanes as well.
Thank you.
If you give me your phone number.
I have it. I have it. I was going to, but I'll wait for her to write her phone number.
Thank you.
Ms. Dickinson.
Oh, Mrs.
Mrs. Dickinson.
I earned that title. Yes, sir.
Before your comment, we actually have been planning pickleball courts.
Thank you. Well, in Mountain House is how, the newspaper is how I get my information.
Wow, you know what they say about the news. And what was the second, bike lanes?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, this is semi-serious.
It is serious.
I'm semi-serious. We should just take all the bikes away from the kids because they're not going to wear their helmets anyways, so no more bikes, then then nobody's going to get hit.
It is state law that they wear their helmets, so that should be enforced.
But he is, the mayor is joking, he's not going to take bikes away.
Oh, no.
Well, I, I thought about it.
Or scooters, or what else they writing?
Those electric things, they're not supposed to ride those either, but they do.
I know.
So we should take those away.
Yeah, and you should make bike lanes in the new developments.
All right, next item, I mean, next speaker is Roxanne. How about just Roxanne? Welcome. Kelso Road.
Yes, thank you very much. I am over on the Kelso Road where they're building the new houses. All the new parks and everything, if there was going to be a skateboard park. And if there wasn't, I'd like to put in just a good word for it, just because busy kids. Oh, good, okay, thank you.
But we're going to take the skateboards away too, because they don't wear helmet, they don't wear their wrist braces. You know, you know how I make my money in the ER? Broken wrists. Exactly, that too. All right, we have one more item, I can't read this. Chandra, ah, man, your handwriting starts with a G. Come on up. Chandra, right? Hi.
Grundy. Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, City Council, respected members of the council and fellow citizens. My name is Chandra Grundy. I am actually here to introduce my son, Anish. He's going to talk about Suryamaskar Yagnya. This is yoga for health and health for humanity. Go ahead.
Hello, respected City Council, my name is Anish Grundy. I'm, I'm currently a freshman at Mountain House High School, and this is the Suryamaskar Yagnya, yoga for health and health for humanity. So the Hindu Sway Sevak Sangh or Hesha says is proud to announce the eighty-eight years of Suryamaskar Yagnya, also known as SNY. Now, this also we call it the Health and Humanity Yoga Town. This is taking place on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five to February second, two thousand twenty-five. This is a sixteen-day event that promotes public health awareness and encourages practicing Suryamaskars or the Sun Saturation, a yoga routine renowned for its physical and mental benefits. The Suryamaskar integrates simple yoga postures with easy breathing techniques and immense health benefits. Either myself or volunteers from our organization who have trained or certified in yoga can conduct free workshops for students or staff in January or February of two thousand twenty-five as part of the program. Last year, over nineteen thousand students from more than one hundred schools across forty-three states participated in this health awareness initiative. We could coordinate to host one or more live sessions with students during the designated PE time. Previously, we had conducted sessions at LSC schools like Hanson Wickland, as well as local daycare centers and community groups. Now we're planning to kick off SNY on January eighteenth at one of the many parks in Mountain House. It will share more details via email. We'd be delighted to have you join us for this event. For any contacts, you can contact my dad, Chandra Grundy, or one of our family friends, Suresh Grundy. I have some flyers, can I pass it out?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Usually they bring flyers with food. Just kidding. Why'd you give me two there?
That was a very nice report, being that you had fifty seconds left, you could slow down next time.
Who's Suresh? You're, that's Suresh? Oh, okay.
Suresh also lives in Montanos. He is not here today, but yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
January eighteenth. Okay, I think that was the last of the public comments, so now we'll move forward to the next item.
Just so I can track this, January eighteenth at which park?
So we, we haven't raised that call yet. We're going to decide that and send out the details. I have a flyer. I got a flyer.
You need to come up to the, we're recording you.
Yeah, so Matt, we're going to get those details figured out pretty soon. I'm going to send out a flyer. Actually, I need one support from the board, you know, from the City Council. We were planning to do like a demo and a group yoga session in the Plaza area, so we need your help, maybe, you know, just getting that set up and any of the support that you can do.
MHTSDrecreations@sjgov.org, email them, but it has to be something you have to plan out closer to like forty-five, sixty days, I think the turnaround for this would be a little short.
We haven't changed our, we haven't changed our email yet? It's still MHTSD?
I think it's Laura's, it's still MHTSDrecreation@sjgov.org? Okay.
It's MHrec, yeah.
Or you can chat with her at the end of the meeting, she'll help you out.
Okay.
Got to catch her before she slides out.
Yeah.
All right.
So, yeah, thank you. I, I do have a point of clarification. You want that done in the town hall plaza? In the, in the area in the back near the fountain?
If possible, remember.
I thought that's what you were saying.
We did once, Bernice, remember? We, in the past, couple of years ago, you attended that time as well.
All right, well, go ahead and contact staff about it. It is pretty short now, so, all right, we're moving on to item six.
Never mind, yeah, contact staff, but that's not, if it's available, you can use it.
Okay. Thank you, Bernice.
Item six is recognition, announcements, or presentations, and Margaret, I think for this calendar year, it's going to be trustee Olson, because they switch roles. Six point one, we have a presentation from the Lammersville Unified School District, trustee Olson. Former president.
Good evening, Mayor Sue, councilmembers. Happy to be here with you, like, I'm back after a year. The Lammersville trustees had their board reorganization in December, and trustee Boulay, who was here with you for the last year, is our, our new board president, and I am the clerk again this time, so I'm excited to come back and spend some time reporting on the great things happening in our district to you all. One major celebratory thing that happened this new year is that Lammersville has hit eight thousand students in December, so we are at the eight thousand mark, and we will be climbing fast up that hill to those, you know, nine thousand students, so that, that's exciting to see the growth. And on that note, Neighborhood J construction starting means that we have yesterday interviewed contractors for the next two schools, Neighborhood J, and then whether it will be Neighborhood K or I will be determined later, but the contractors were interviewed for the next two schools in Lammersville, so that's, that's exciting. And finally, just one last thing to report, we don't have a lot this month, but on Saturday, this, this Saturday, the Mountain House students will be representing the orchestra, band, and choir with other students around the county at the San Joaquin County Office of Education Honor Choir Band and Orchestra Concert, and we have so many students in each of those groups. We are way overrepresented compared to the other schools, we have so much talent, and so if you're free on Saturday evening at seven PM, it's a great event, and you will see many of our community members and students there. Thank you.
Where is this?
It's at Delta College up in Stockton at their, I can't remember the name of the concert hall.
Seven thirty?
Yeah, seven PM, seven PM.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Did you have a?
I did, Stephanie, I just wanted to ask, when do you guys plan on start building, plan to start building on the schools? I know you're interviewing contractors, but is there a, a start date once that's finished?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact date, but I'm sure there will be like a groundbreaking, and, you know, we'll definitely be inviting everybody. As soon as all the approval processes are done, you know, with the, the State Department of Architecture, and which I think, I think that's, you know, happening, so it should be soon, you know, and then, and we'll, yeah, about, yeah, two-year timeline approximately, hopefully no delays. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point two, water supply update. We need Karen. Karen Morgan, Utilities Manager. That's a thick packet you got there. We still haven't figured this thing out, it's, the, the lines are so far over, I mean, the table's so far over. Isn't it usually more over? Oh, okay.
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm excited to be here tonight for a water update. I presented a water update October eleventh of two thousand twenty-three, and we discussed a lot of water supply alternatives at that time. I was just getting to know the city and the project, so I'm, I feel a lot more comfortable now, so if you want to interrupt me as we're talking about this stuff, I'd be happy to explain. It's complicated, but it's my passion, so. We've made significant progress in planning and development of viable projects to ensure robust diversified, diversified water portfolio. Okay, stay there. California's water is changing, we've talked about this quite a bit. In the top left-hand corner, you'll see the severe drought in October of two thousand twenty-two, and then the following year is right below it, the bottom left, that's September of two thousand twenty-three, a complete turnaround. We were in a severe drought, and then the next year, it's declared no drought. And then right in the center there, you have the drought outlook for the whole United States, and you can see that California is scooting back into a drought year. So, next slide. One more? Okay, we're done. So here's just another way to look at droughts. It's a chart from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five, so you can see the red is the more severe years, and the yellow is just abnormally dry, so I would imagine that the white in between is some wet years. We've, we've had a lot of severe droughts, and they're getting worse as time goes on. Next slide. No. Okay, so here's a look at the other end of the spectrum. We also have severe floods. In the top left, or the, the left-hand picture is total precipitation from twenty-three, twenty-four, it was December twenty-sixth through the seventeenth. The white would be the heaviest amount of precipitation, and the white, the, the yellow would be, or the light, light green would be the littlest amount of precipitation, so this was obviously a really good winter. I spent quite a bit of time in the light purple area up on the Sierras. You can see in the center, that's an atmospheric river headed towards the coast. That was taken January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and then the far right is the San Joaquin River near Manteca and Lathrop during the heavy rains in twenty-three and twenty-four, and obviously some severe flooding and folks impacted. The Department of Water Resources states that they're preparing for a dry two thousand twenty-five. Next slide. Oh, that's me. I just have it on my notes here to tell me to do that. So here again is another really cool picture of an atmospheric river headed straight towards California. So the, the patterns of the hot and dry weather through falls persisted with short durations of rain. This pattern has continued through into our winter. DWR's electronic readings of a hundred and three, or a hundred and thirty stations placed throughout the Sierra Nevada indicate the statewide snowpack snow equivalent is ten point seven inches or a hundred and eight percent of the average, and this has gotten a little bit better, some storms since I've written this, compared to twenty-eight percent last year, so a hundred and eight percent this year compared to twenty-eight last year, but they say we're going to have a dry year. We have a long way to go until April, when the snowpack is at its peak. This volatility makes it extremely difficult to plan for the future. We are working hard to build reliability and resiliency for the community. There is a lot of work in the greater Central Valley to take advantage of these floodwaters that do come through. There's, there's a lot of new work with that. Farmers are, are building retention ponds and capturing some of that surface water and also using it to recharge our groundwater basins, which are severely overdrafted in the Central Valley. Here's a look at our reservoirs across California, they look really good. Most of them are above average at a hundred and twenty-one percent, thanks to two consecutive years of above-average snowpack. The Sierra snowpack supplies about thirty percent of California's waters, waters needs. Its natural ability to store water is why the Sierra snowpack is also, is often referred to as the frozen reservoir. And here's another look at how water is stored, both via man-made structures and natural. Water is stored, water storage is critical for sustainability. They say that the snowpack is roughly fifteen million acre feet of water storage. Surface water reservoirs hold about forty acre feet, and then the top soils hold about eighty million acre feet, sorry, these are all million acre feet, and then groundwater can hold a hundred, or one thousand million acre feet, so the groundwater supply is definitely the largest reservoir. And so we have here the City of Mountain House. We get our sole supply from surface water, we're a hundred depend, a hundred percent dependent on surface water. Through a sales agreement with BBID, we get nine thousand eight hundred and thirteen acre feet a year. With the challenges of droughts in California and the fluctuations between flooding, the, the State Water Resources Control Board water supply state squeezed, it's putting communities and agriculture at risk. Future drought uncertainty combined with increased state mandatory reductions in water usage and enforcement is expected to impact the city in the future on multiple levels. We face a potential loss in rate revenues, increasing cost of water, threat to the growth of the community through building moratoriums, potential ban on outdoor irrigation, risking the city's hundred million dollar plus in growing investment in landscaping. Additional restrictions would be particularly difficult because Mountain House community was designed from its inception with low water use landscaping and water, water-saving construction in mind. We have put together through the board action a one point six million dollar drought contingency fund, and as of Jan, Jan thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, the city's goal is to accumulate two million in the drought contingency fund, and this would help make emergency water purchases if needed, if there was a curtailment. And we keep building on this drought contingency fund as years go on. So water reliability, BBID has pre nineteen fourteen water rights, which has always been thought to be bulletproof. BBID continued pumping through the seventy-six and seventy-seven droughts and the eighty-seven and ninety-two droughts, but in two thousand fifteen, an unprecedented action was to curtail BBID's water by the State Water Resources Control Board. Shortly after that, the State Water Resources Control Board issued a compliance order to the City of Mountain House, requiring an alternative water supply. And again, in twenty-one, there was another curtailment threat to BBID's water. Every year, DWR performs an herbicidal treatment in Clifton Court Four Bay, which is the source of our, our water, and during that time period, we asked residents not to use irrigation, we asked the schools to shut their irrigation off, we also shut the city's irrigation off, and then we tried to stockpile about seven days of clean drinking water in our storage tanks, and this is becoming more difficult to do as the city grows and demands increase. That water doesn't get stretched quite as far. So what are we doing to try to remedy all of this? We've got several projects that have been in the work for a very long time. We have repairing water rights, change order petition, we have the South San Joaquin Irrigation District, raw water storage at the water treatment plant, aquifer storage and recovery, Wickland Cut, Tracy Tyon, sites in Semitropic, a loss of a caros pilot project, and Mountain House Creek. These are all projects that we have vetted out over the last year pretty significantly. So I'll go through each of these hopefully pretty quickly, and again, if you have questions, interrupt me. The Old River is adjacent to the property along Mountain House, along Byron Bethany, and this land has repairing water rights, and to retain these water rights, a mutual water company was formed, and that mutual water company has partnered with the city for us to treat and supply back this repairing water right. And there's the potential of roughly two thousand five hundred and seventy acre feet, just depending on water demands. The change order petition, this is a wastewater change petition. As the wastewater treatment plant treats the water to a really high standard now with our new wastewater treatment plant, we put it into Old River, and this flows right back into Clifton Court Four Bay. So the city is applying to claim rights to the wastewater treatment plant effluent, and at full buildout, this could bring us five point four million gallons a day, or another six thousand forty-eight acre feet a year. South San Joaquin has always been a partner with us in our time of need, and we are working with them to help supply a minimum in health and safety, just in case we do get curtailed. They were willing to do this in the past, and we're hoping that they're willing to do it in the future. So without our commercial folks, we need seven point five one million gallons a day, and if we include our commercial accounts, it's eight point nine four million gallons a day. So another exciting project, Mountain House developers has agreed to work on a raw water storage pond at the water treatment plant, and this will act like a pass-through and will always keep it full. It would give maybe a two or three-day supply if something were ever happened, like a pump failure at the raw water pump station or something like that. So it just buys us a little bit of time. We're hoping to, to get about seventy acre feet, and that might be a stretch. Another really exciting project that we're working on, the Department of Water Resources was required to drill monitoring wells to monitor groundwater levels throughout the sub-basin for the state, for the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. They drilled four new wells. This is a monitoring well that's being, that was drilled at our water treatment plant. They worked twenty-four hours a day, they drilled down to eight hundred and fifty feet and installed four nested monitoring wells, and these water levels will need to be monitored biannually. So what they were looking for was the corcain clay, and they found it. So in the bottom right-hand corner, there in the yellow box, you can actually see the blue. blue and gray corcoran clay layer. This is a really good sign because that corcoran clay layer protects the lower aquifer. So now knowing that we have that, we know that there's a little bit more protection underneath Mountain House. And you can see here the new monitoring wells in those blue boxes. There's two at the top and two closer to the bottom. This also completes the picture of what it looks like underground and where that corcoran clay layer is. With a feasibility study that we did earlier, maybe 10 years ago, they were looking at an ASR well, aquifer storage and recovery well. The best spot would be between the city of Mountain House and Tracy for water quality So I took a visit to Roseville to take a look at their aquifer storage and recovery well. It's somewhat simplistic, but complicated at the same time. So what we're looking to do is put together, we have a request for proposal that's been put together and we're wanting to send it out next week with proposals due February 17th. And I am hoping to bring this back before you on March 27th for approval to move forward with a design build of an aquifer storage and recovery well. So Wickland Cut is another project that we've invested quite a bit of time into. We've taken two trips to Washington DC with BBID and their lobbyist group. The board approved a cost share agreement of roughly $1 million to move forward with the feasibility study to find the project alternatives and pick the best one to move forward with. This feasibility study was used to apply for the Watersmart grant. This was submitted November of '24. And we're hoping that our project is selected May 25 and that we get our funding September 25. This is a 10-year project and a phased approach and $50 million. Pretty expensive, but it's a very good source of water with 20 cubic feet per second allocated for us. The Tracy tie-in, yes.
Can we go back one slide? Can you explain how the $50 million is applied? Is that solely from the grant or?
We're going to do a multi-pronged approach for grant funding. So right now, we did a 50/50 cost share just to get that feasibility study done. And then once we move forward beyond that, we'll invest money that we're going to get, you know, benefits from.
Splitting with BBID?
Yeah. Well, it'll be shared with BBID, but it won't be a 50/50 cost share. And so we'll do everything that we can to apply for every grant that we can. And since it's a phased approach, these grants get funded multiple years in a row and you just have to keep applying. So hoping that we get this. And it's a really good project and it has support from Josh Harder significantly. So he's fighting for this project to come to fruition.
So we did go 50/50 on the cost share for the?
Just for the feasibility study in the beginning. It was just a little bit over $2 million, just so we could apply for the grant.
But we're not on the hook for?
No.
We're not expected to be on the hook?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So the Tracy tie-in is another project that we've discussed quite a bit. We completed a technical memo that would help us determine whether or not we are able to supply Tracy with any emergency water supply. So they looked at two options, a 12-inch connection and a 16-inch connection. And it would be ideally off one of their dead ends, which would help with their water quality. And so looking at the numbers, we are only able to accept water from Mountain House. We don't have the oomph to really give them anything. So it would be a one-way connection.
I have to do a question on that with the Tracy tie-in. Now Tracy is requesting tie-in for water from us?
No. That was what we were hoping that we could share, provide water back and forth. If they had an emergency, we could help them. You know, it would be a benefit for them to do the tie-in, but it's really only going to be possible to do.
And that was my understanding, that we were at one point trying to partner with them to get water from Hetch-Echey. So that's dead, huh?
That one I'm not sure about. I haven't heard about the Hetch-Echey project.
That was under discussion probably about a year and a half ago, sharing with them for getting water, sharing with Tracy for additional water resources and getting it from Hetch-Echey.
I don't know. I'm not sure about the exact source.
Well, there is, there's some other, I'm not sure Hetch-Echey, but there are in San Luis, potentially Los Vaqueros and others. We were looking at whether or not we could use access through Tracy to get to that water. But so far, we're not finding a way to make that happen.
Because after hearing this, it kind of threw a wrinkle in that because I thought we were partnering with them and I didn't know they wanted water from us.
We were hoping that we could have a benefit on both sides, that we could help supply them water in an emergency. And then if we have an emergency, we could have water. Tracy has an extremely diversified water portfolio.
Yes, they do.
They have water from many different sources. So if you color the water one source, if that's curtailed and we have that same color of water, then we're curtailed. So my hope would be to not tie it specifically to one of their water rights. It would be like a customer and we just purchase water if we need to. But that's just a concept I have. None of that's been totally vetted out. There's been a lot of discussions with Tracy and our management staff, trying to figure out the best way to move forward. So this was just a technical memo that was completed by a consultant that says, here's the capabilities, here's what's possible. So none of those decisions or communications have been settled. Yeah, we're still working on it. Okay, so the next one, this is kind of excited, exciting too. These are our water storage options. So Sites is a reservoir that's up near Sacramento. And they're looking, it's a new supply and a new storage at 1.5 million acre-feet capacity. And they've set aside a little over 300,000 for environmental uses and they're hoping to be online in 2032. This gives every partner in the group water supply flexibility. I could go into more detail on that one, but I'd have to look at my notes because it's, we just got into the group, so we're going to be attending their meetings. We have one in January. So we've just gotten into that. That just happened a few weeks ago. Another storage option that we were trying to get into is a groundwater banking called Semitropic. It's in Kern County. That's also something that Tracy's a part of. And they've got 1.65 million acre-feet capacity and it provides water in droughts for 20 million people. This would be like a trading type of situation, but we're having a really difficult time getting a response from Semitropic. So we might have to go down and knock on the door. Los Vaqueros, this was a huge project that was underway for quite some time. It was moving forward and then all of a sudden came to an end. It was a dam expansion project. There were several agencies that were stakeholder, including BBID. But CCWD announced in November 7th, 2024, the week that we were meeting with Josh Harder, the morning of, they actually went in and let him know that the project had ended. So this actually opens up a pilot project opportunity for us. If we could somehow get water up into Los Vaqueros and get it back seamlessly, then that could be a great option for us in the future for water storage. But that's still to be vetted out and it's stuff that we've been working on.
That would be in the existing supply.
Yes, in the existing supply. Yeah.
The expansion just got to the point where with all the requirements that the state and feds put on them, that it just didn't pencil out. And so the big investors, which were San Francisco and some of the other East Bay bed and others, just realized it was never going to make sense financially based on what the requirements were going to be in the expansion, which is really disappointing.
Very.
But there's still some opportunities with a lot of potential hoops that we have to jump through to potentially, there is some, you know, we're very small compared to the size of this reservoir. So there is, it seems like, some opportunities with the existing reservoir for us to potentially get storage or store water or get water there from time to time. So that's what we're, so now it's like, we're not going to worry about the expansion. We're seeing if there's some opportunities to get water delivered under the existing reservoir. And the problem is it would probably take Karen the rest of the night to explain to you the intricacies of what seems like a simple, somebody opens a pipe and the water should come to us, but state and feds don't make things that easy.
Don't we have, don't we have some water rights reserved there?
That would have been in the expansion. And now the expansion's been canceled.
Thanks.
Because it just economically failed. So that's a huge disappointment, but at the same time, as she said, it brings a new opportunity because with the big guys pulling out, we had already started to develop a relationship with the Contra Costa Water District, CCWD. And we think there's some potential opportunities to access the existing reservoir. Not as good an opportunity as we had with the expansion, but in either case, we still had some delivery challenges that we're working with BBID on. Just because of the weird rules of what way, it's mind-boggling. It would seem, engineering-wise, it's not an issue. It's regulatory, which way water, you know, who gets water and how? The best way to explain it, Karen?
Yes. It's got, there's lots of different colors to water. Okay. So another option that we looked at is Mountain House Creek. How could we store more water in or around Mountain House Creek, above, below, right in town? And we spent a lot of time looking at different options and we had a technical memo that was completed to evaluate the in-stream and off-stream options. This was the best of all of those and it's a four-leaf clover pattern and it would be just above Mountain House Creek. I believe that's Grantline Road. Is that right, Steve?
Right, over in Alameda County.
Yes, in another county as well. So this project is somewhat dead because it's incredibly expensive. I think we came up with about $20,000 per acre-foot. So it's not feasible.
Yeah, you don't, it's as expensive, it's really expensive for the base cost and then you really don't get that much storage. So there's not a lot of economies in doing this. But we, but given that it's right here, that, you know, one of our local landowners controls all the land, it was definitely worth looking at. But economically, it just, it couldn't store enough water to make sense.
Not over 300 years. Okay, so this is a chart I made and it's a little bit small, but I'd be more than happy to share it with you. I needed a way to try to look at it in a different way to see what projects could be done, like what's realistic and how long is this going to take and which projects should we really attack first. And so up towards the top of the graph is the easier ones, the low-hanging fruit. Towards the bottom is the more challenging ones. And then you have your timeline. So I just wanted to show you in a different way what we're working on and hopefully what we can have done in the next few years.
And then the next chart's even better, I think.
Yeah, and this was our scoring chart that we worked on and it's still in draft, but, and flexible as we find out more. This kind of shows us what are we looking at? Water supply, water storage, or water delivery? And then what's the likelihood of this actually coming to fruition? So things scooted around. Sites reservoir was looking a very low probability and that's not the case anymore. So depending off cost, of course. So we'll continue to vet some of these out, but we are very excited that some of these projects are underway, like the repairing, the repairing water rights, the raw water storage, that's going to help. And then hopefully the aquifer and storage recovery well will be really fruitful because I'm hoping over time that that will hold enough water for a six-month curtailment and potentially a year as more wells could get added to the well field. But you have to do a test well and see what's it capable of doing and that's just not quite known yet. That's the first step after acquiring land. Any questions?
And I think it's important to emphasize that, you know, we have, we have two issues. We have both, we have, we have water rights to give us all the water that we need. The challenge we have is that the state is now taking an approach that because we're the valley and we're not the coast, that our rights are a lot more fungible, it seems like, than the folks that have a lot more population. The valley is always the one who gets the short end of the stick. And the delta in particular, they're taking some very unproven approaches to how much water they think exists in the delta at any point in time. So it's called, the big issue is what's called residence time. How long is the water in the delta as it goes through the delta? And they're taking, and so of course, the less time it's in there, that means there's less actually flowing through and then that means there's less water available. They don't really know and they don't have any proven documentation to back up what they think is the residence time in the delta. But they're taking this uber-consumptive approach to how much water is available. And so even though we have this pre-1914 water right for all the water we're ever going to need, we discovered 10 years ago that the state can just decide that even if it's perfected, our math tells us it's an emergency and we're going to have to take some of this water away. And in fact, the state's been attempting legislation to basically throw all water rights. The state's real goal is to eliminate all pre-existing water rights and then they just decide what makes the most sense. What typically happens when the state does that is that the valley loses all their rights, but nobody else does. So it's something that we always vociferously oppose out here in the valley. But nonetheless, we are now in a situation where we have, we've been essentially mandated to make sure that we have backups to our long-term supply. So on that chart, it shows you that now the, being able to use our wastewater is going to, is a very simple one. It's just paying a fee. It's not anything we have to do from a capital standpoint. It's just when we dump the wastewater back in the river, we get credit for that as additional water that we can tap on an annual basis. That's one. Two, we now have these lands north of Byron Road that have, that always had rights to the water in Old River. That's been perfected, but that riparian right isn't necessarily guaranteed every year and we at the moment don't have a way to actually get that water delivered to us. And so we have to go through a process. That's one of the things where Wickland Cut could come in handy. And then three, as she said, the aquifer storage seems to be the best, you know, short-term win for long-term supply, whereas a contract with SSGID is kind of the, until we get these other capital projects built. Those are the, probably the top ones when we're, what we're looking at for long-term backup supply because the state has said that we can't ever, we at the state have decided that the delta is not as reliable as you used to think it was. And we are going to, through our powers, that still aren't clear whether they really have those powers. You know, they lost in court to BBID about five years ago, which is why they keep trying to legislate. They basically said, you can't rely on the delta, you got to have other backups. So Karen's got all these great alternatives for us now. And then we've got this new reservoir and some other things we're looking at as well. The other issue, of course, we have is a short-term water supply. Because right now, we just got one pipe coming in this town from BBID and that's it. That's another area where Wickland Cut can come in handy. But more importantly, just having another pond out at the water treatment plant will take care of if we have a hyacinth spraying or something that goes a couple extra days. We need, we need to have additional just short-term supply if there's some short-term disruption. Yeah, a pump goes out, there's a spill in the delta. We don't have anything but all of us having to hand out bottled water if that was to happen under the current circumstances. It was something that was supposed to be dealt with back in 2000 and the county did not require that before the first building permit was built. So we've got to resolve it now at much higher cost. But that's why the Tracy tie-in makes a lot of sense. That's why the aquifer storage can help with that as well. So we've got all these different opportunities, some with high probability of happening, some with high probability of costing a lot of money, little money. But we have to have all these different alternatives because you don't know when and how all these are going to be approved. But we think it's important that you, as the council, continue to be informed and particularly keeping all this in mind that we will probably be coming back to mid-year to talk about water rates. Because every city in the state is challenged with this. And so when we update our water rates, which we think we want to do sooner than later for a number of reasons, we'll enumerate at the time, we are going to need to start budgeting more money for these long-term capital needs. Now, we're doing lots of things. We're putting some of this cost on new development. We're trying to be creative in how we do these things. So we're trying to minimize the costs to the taxpayers, but there's no question that we're all going to have to share the pain of living in the valley in California to ensure that we all have a long-term water supply.
Can we go back two slides, please? Just to get a photo of that? The roadmap with timeline?
So Karen, I have a question. So bottom line is we have all these opportunities, but we haven't secured anything yet.
We're getting there. So the water storage at the plant is under development right now through MHD. So that's, that's happening right now. And then that, the aquifer storage and recovery request for proposal for a design build is going to go out on Monday. So hopefully mid-March, I can be back here with a contractor ready to start exploring that aggressively.
And hopefully SSGID this spring as well.
Yeah.
For the short-term.
Yeah.
Water supply.
Yep.
But as of today, we still only have that one.
Yep, yep. And it's not just drought that can impact it. If there was a large earthquake and we had a significant seawater intrusion, it would ruin everybody's water supply in the area for years. So that's a little bit scary. And then you have acts of terrorism and, you know, wear and tear on the pumps, so. Lightning bolts, yes.
So we don't receive any water from the snowpack?
Yes, because we're surface water only. Yes, because we're surface water only. So the snowpack supplies both surface water and groundwater, but most of the snowpack runs off as surface water into our rivers and streams.
So hopefully we'll have a good snowpack this year.
I like to ski, so that's where I'm at.
Any other questions?
So we just thought it'd be good to have all this background before the next series of items come back to you.
Okay, we're good on this side. You guys good? Thank you, Karen. Let's move on to our consent items. Consent agenda items will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member or member of the public may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. We've already moved seven, removed 7.3. Anybody else? If, any questions? If not, can we, somebody make a motion to approve?
A motion to approve all city councils.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingel?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
All right, let's move on to item eight. 8.1, approve the fiscal year 2025-26 city-sponsored special events calendar. Mayor calls on Laura Johns, oh, spelled wrong. Johnston.
There you go.
Recreation manager.
I'll bet you Laura's never had that spelled wrong before.
Never.
No. My daughter's high school quote was, it's Johnston with a T.
My apologies, Laura.
So good evening, Mayor Sue, Vice Mayor Tingel, members of the council. Staff recommend that the Mountain House City Council adopt the 25-26 city-sponsored special events calendar. As you know, Mountain House is extremely proud of its special events, whether they're city-run or local organizations. They foster community engagement, they boost local economies, allow opportunities for local small businesses to flourish, strengthen social connections. And as Mayor Sue said today at the park ground opening, our parks create memories. So a little bit of background. There we go. In previous years, the CSD Board adopted the events calendar, established a budget, and they directed staff to coordinate the events. Staff typically presented a calendar year list of events in January. However, half of the events, January through June, which actually there's only a few, would have already been planned, and they would have already been funded. So what you have in your packet today is an attachment, is the proposed special events for July 25 through June 26. And once approved, we'll submit them with the recommended fiscal year budget for '25 and '26. So just a recap of 2024. We had family events. We hosted the kite festival in June. We had retail vendors, food vendors, Sparkles the Clown, a local favorite, large kites, and lots of wind. Actually, not as much as typically, but usually it's the least windiest day of the year. We hosted our summer outdoor concert series, also known as Music in the Park. We averaged around 1,200 to 1,500 per Music in the Park, depending on the month, the band, the heat. We had retail vendors, food vendors, and we hosted a Kid Zone, keep them busy. We also collaborated with our public safety, Rank Security, Sheriff Department, Mountain House Fire Department for our bike rodeo in May and our national night out in August. The night out was actually particularly fun because we had a helicopter fly-in, which was really popular. And we had Chief Corneilson and some of our council members in our dunk tank, which we had this year, so that was fun. We thank them for participating. We hosted a couple cultural events again this year. We hosted our second annual Juneteenth, which was by far, it was part of our Mountain Music in the Park series. It was our largest event of the summer. We had a committee of community members, council members, and staff organize the event. We had food and retail vendors. We featured several black-owned businesses. We had local and regional district representatives and dignitaries. We had Black history presentations. We had line dancing demonstrations and hula-hoop demonstrations. And again, we want to thank our council members for participating. We also hosted our cultural celebration in September. Again, it was to round out our Music in the Park series. This event was, was created in particular from response from past council members wanting to host more multicultural-type musical events. We had, again, we had feature, featured vendors that had culturally diverse foods and gift items. And for this particular event, we had a main stage with a large musical ox. We also hosted a small stage, and we had various cultural dancers and demonstrations. So that was a first for this event. We also hosted our Independence Day Parade with nearly 1,900 in attendance along the three-quarter mile route down Central Parkway. We had to unfortunately cancel our celebration at the park due to the extreme heat that was predicted that day, and I'm glad we did. I think it was over in the, in the high 110s. We invited our vendors that would have participated to participate in our parade. So they lined up last minute along Central, and it was very successful. They were all very pleased. We kicked off the parade with our cityhood commemoration with a large stage at the corner of Central and Main, where the mayor, along with council members, community members, past board members, cut the ribbon and really kicked off our cityhood. We hosted a couple new events this year. We had the Senior Health and Wellness Expo in May. It was held in conjunction with Senior, Older Americans Month. We offered health screenings and speakers. And then we had the Central Park Cinema. We knew that there had been past events hosted in the park for movies, so we thought, why don't we do it as well? So it, this year, we were so grateful to Rank Security. They sponsored the entire thing. They paid for everything for that. Our attendance was far more than we ever anticipated. And I think for our last one in August, just before school started, we had 750 people attend.
And the YAG started that.
Yes, so the YAG had it, and I believe Mountain House Events had hosted some. So it was extremely popular. And it was good this year, we had our community vote on the movies. We gave them a large selection of recommended movies, and they picked the two movies. And then we rounded out the year with our Moho-Ho holidays, our second annual Moho-Ho. However, in the past, the city has hosted holiday events. But the, we hosted our second annual light-up Main Street and tree lighting. We adored all the light poles with lights and wreaths. We had a holiday market. We had vendors and food vendors out there. We had live music on our stage. The trees, lights that we had out there this year were sponsored by Sala Sala, a refined real estate, so it was nice to get some local support. We hosted two breakfasts with Santa's. Both were sold out and extremely popular. We hosted those at the Unity Center this year because we knew they were just going to be large. And then we had our lobby decorations. We had two large Christmas trees and our letters with Santa. We, we had a couple hundred letters come through. And we made sure it got to Santa just in time, so. All right, so in your packet, you should have a list of proposed events for July of 2025 through '26. Staff proposed, including all of their current successful annual events like the bike rodeo, music, kite festival, Music in the Park, Independence Day Parade and Celebration, cultural celebration, and the Moho Holiday Events. Staff are proposing to add an additional Central Park Cinema this summer. So we'll have one in June, July, and August. And then we'd like to explore adding a youth art exhibit in March of 2026. That's a little over a year away. And that would be in conjunction with Youth Art Month, which is a national event. You'll notice too in the packet that Music in the Park is proposed to be 7 to 9, which is different from the 6 to 9 that we currently have it. That's just in response to our new AI programming where we can track attendance. And we noticed that majority of the attendance started coming in at 7. It could be that it's still too hot, maybe it's too bright. The sun doesn't quite go down over the ball field until about 7. And most other cities, a lot of our local cities surrounding us also host it from 7 to 9. So staff is proposing that change. We are also proposing to moving the holiday event back to the first Friday as opposed to the first Saturday. The attendance did go up a little bit, not a significant increase. We did hear from some vendors that we reached out to that they couldn't participate because they were attending the Tracy Parade, which was also the first Saturday. And then looking back, I think I went back as far as 2017, and all of our previous holiday events were hosted on the first Friday. So staff are just proposing to move it back to the first Friday, but you're more than welcome to make any other recommendations about that.
When you take questions, I'd like to explore that, the tree lighting being on a Saturday versus, versus a Friday. So when you get to any questions on that, I'd like to comment.
Sure. Let's see. Actually, that, that pretty much concludes my report at this time. So if you have any questions.
Vice Mayor Tingel, do you have a question?
Yes.
All right.
On the tree lighting. Mountain House, historically, more people come out on Saturdays versus Fridays because of commuting and very, various other reasons. But I, I'd like to see if there's enough data to support having it on a Friday versus a Saturday. Because with school being in and, and, and the, and the commuting, and we're growing, I'd like to see it celebrated or done on a day where we're going to, we'd be more feasible for our total community to come out and participate.
And I think that's the reason why we moved it to Saturday this year. Because of that, we wanted to address that. We know a lot of people are commuters here. And like I said, the attendance did go up slightly on Saturday. It's not that it was significant enough, but the past, it's always been on the first Friday. So I'll, I'll leave it up to you in your recommendation. It wasn't any worse than the previous years. And it's, it's a lot easier to plan to on Saturdays just because we have most of the day to put it all together. So I'll, I'll leave that up to you if you want to discuss it more.
Any other questions?
No, that was going to be held up for discussion. So it's not, it's not ironclad that it's going to be on Fridays now.
It is your call, yeah.
If the attendance did go up 100 people, that could be significant. But as we grow, if that continues on, you could extrapolate the numbers.
Yeah, it was a 13% increase. And with our community growing, 13% could mean a couple hundred more, so.
Okay, just an item for consideration by, by our board to discuss.
I do want to say, though, if we do have it on the first Saturday, it would mean we'd have to move our breakfast to the second Saturday. We found that we conflicted with the jingle run. We made it work. We worked with Wickland School to make sure we worked it out. But just wanted to let you know that.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I too, along with Vice Mayor Tingel, I believe that we should keep it on Saturday. And, or this is my thought, okay? We need to do what's good for the community. Okay, what, as a city? You know, the jingle run, that's, that's a separate, that's a private sponsored event. With the traffic being a nightmare, okay, coming in from the Bay Area, I think it's really stressful for the folks to be able to get home, get their kids or whatever, and even make it, you know, by 7, especially, you know, in December. And then with, with the, again, with this grown every year, okay? Even though this, what was this, this AI, place AI data that you had, was, there was only 100 more that you showed in, for 2024 versus 2023. But again, as, as we grow, maybe next year, we're going to have 100, 100 more.
Sure.
And then by 2026, we'll have another 100. I just think that I got a lot of good responses that it was on us for Saturday. And I just think it, again, the council should look at it and maybe keep it on the Saturday just for, again, for the fact that it's just really, it's, it's hard for our residents, I believe, to be, you know, ready for that. And maybe the jingle run, they could, you know, work around our schedule.
We, we actually made it work with them. We coordinated with them, we worked with our traffic safety plan, and we, we were able to figure it out. We, we moved our first breakfast to be just right after the jingle run had started, so there were no conflicts.
Yeah, it was just, it was a little tough in the morning because of the traffic and stuff to, because, you know, they had all the streets, you know, blocked off. But again, like I said, I'm just looking at us as a city, what we owe to our community, and then others, they could do it around us.
Any, Councilmember Disco had some questions?
Yeah, so the five years going on, six I've been here, historically, I've seen Fridays were kind of like the tree lighting tradition where Town Hall was just way too packed. But a lot of those people didn't actually show up for the tree lighting, which happened before it all came after. And then fast forward to this year, and I feel like probably double the amount of people that could ever fit in Town Hall were spread out in that whole block and at the tree lighting. And it wasn't too much more than it was last year. But we're also going back into a year now post-pandemic where the, the number of, of employees being pulled back in three, five days a week even, as of this week, they're all getting announcements. So a lot of big companies, Chase and things like that, they're bringing everybody back in. So while historically, that I've seen Fridays were successful, you know, this year, people are going back to work from COVID last year, not as much. But still, I would take that in a serious consideration moving forward this year in hopes that, you know, a Saturday night, even though we're competing with Tracy, which I did hear a lot of residents said, well, you know, all the high school performances and things like that from our high school, the families and things were over there. So in addition to supporting Saturday, I would also like to throw Sunday in the hat and see what people think about Sunday. It is school, a school season, but this event kind of starts wrapping up around 8:30. Like, people start kind of drifting out. And the tree lighting's at what, 6, at dusk?
We had it at 6, yeah, 6:15.
6:15, yeah, yeah.
It was just about dusk.
I mean, there's still enough time for them to come, grab something to eat, and go by 8, and the kids can be in bed in time for school. So just want to throw Sunday out there for consideration of the council. Thank you. And also, can we move 4th of July to like a cooler time of the summer?
Wait, hey, can I, can I just throw out that we're in the question portion of this item? If you have clarification, not, not the discussion portion. So anything to clarify? Clarification question?
I have a clarification on the, the September Music in the Park cultural celebration. I think it should probably be clarified to include and more publicity of all cultures, just identify. Because we're a very diverse city. And ensure that we identify, and I'm sure there's ways to identify, and let all cultures, all cultures be aware of it's a celebration for unity and coming together of all cultures and not just, just a few.
Yeah, we had, this past year, we had some African drummers. We had Indian fusion. We had some Vietnamese dancers. We had Aztec dancers. But yeah, we'll definitely put that out there. It's more culturally around, it's, features all of them.
Any other clarification?
No, just discussion.
Then I got to open it up to public comments. The public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. We didn't get any. All right, I'm going to close public comments and bring it back to the council for discussion. Harrison, Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, with this, I have an issue with the September 20th.
Which one? I just asked them to put the calendar back up.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. With the September 20th Music in the Park being culture celebration, and then on June 20th, Music in the Park celebrating Juneteenth. We need to unite all of our cultures and bring us together, okay? If, if we have a Juneteenth and then we have a culture, why aren't we having anything for Asians' Independence Day? Why aren't we having anything for the Wali for their Independence Day? Matt did an awesome job with the Day of the Dead. Matt did an awesome job with the Day of the Dead, okay? I don't, that may be something with independence also, but what I'm trying to get as, as it should all be combined in that one, where it's the Culture Day, because by isolating this culture, that's dividing us, and that's not what this City Council, Mountain House, represents, okay? And that's just going to cause for some divide. So I'm asking for this to be re-looked at, I believe we have till March, okay, before anything starts kicking off, and put it all together and just not have this separate with the Juneteenth, you know, have it with the rest of the culture celebrations. If not, we better look at opening up to other cultures, okay? So that's, and then also too, I'd like to recommend that going forward, that the Veterans' Day lunch should be added onto the calendar. I know before a person was in charge of it, you know, didn't want it, I believe, City Manager, you said that the city did host it one year?
Yes.
And stuff. You know, it's a low cost, it's under $500 and stuff, but I think that we need to recognize our veterans, so, thank you.
All right, next, I think, was Councilmember Green.
So I would like to discuss, well, just a clarification on the discussion we just had, just regarding Juneteenth. And there's a difference, and I agree with you that all cultures should be represented. That's why we have a cultural day in September. However, Juneteenth is a federal holiday, and it's not a religious holiday, which some of the other ones are. So that's why we support Juneteenth. It's very, very, yes, it is, it's a federal holiday.
Yes.
But it's a federal holiday for...
It's a federal holiday, it's not a state holiday.
But it's a federal holiday for a specific reason, to acknowledge and celebrate the freedom of African Americans in the United States. So it's not about a multicultural thing, because it was the African Americans that were freed in the United States. So that's all come, Juneteenth is not a multicultural, it's more historical. Now, if we want to do the multicultural, which I believe every culture that is here in Mountain House was included to be able to participate and celebrate the September multicultural event. So with that said, Juneteenth is not a multicultural event.
I disagree with you, but I'm just saying that us as a city council, we shouldn't be getting into this division and divide, okay? We always talk about being, you know, diversified, and all that's doing is you're isolating different cultures.
Well, then we should cancel the 4th of July.
All right, let's not have the back and forth, let's, Vice Mayor Tingle, do you have a comment? No?
It had already been said, and you know, if you can't add any value, don't say anything, but I'll repeat the...
Okay.
One of the things is that, it's like 4th of July, things that are federal holidays is celebrated by everyone, and if other cultures, if it's a federal holiday, then yes, it should go into the fold. But I do believe that if something's federal and then we're celebrating other federal days, that Juneteenth could stay separated.
I don't think we need to celebrate every federal holiday, but we, I think we have the right to, as the city council did decide, which ones we want to celebrate. There are other federal holidays that we don't celebrate, right?
Okay.
So, you know, we, as the elected representatives of the Mountain House, get to decide which ones we want to celebrate, and, you know, right now, we are, and in the future, we may not. I mean, that's up to the next, the future city councils. But Councilmember Disco, you had something to add?
Yeah, just my only feedback for the multicultural celebration was just better messaging on who's being represented and what it entails, because I feel like there was a lot of confusion on what it was, and there was a little disassociation of it even being in Music in the Park, because it was, you couldn't tell if it was really a private event or if it was a city event or who it was represented, and I don't, I don't feel like the outreach was there, kind of explaining what it was. Like, the visuals were there, but I think the city as a whole can do a better job in the messaging and kind of, you know, making sure everyone feels invited, you know? I feel like some people thought, oh, it's just another Indian event, and other people were like, oh, it's another Juneteenth, and it's like, it's this weird divide of people and their ignorances and whatever, but, you know, if we, if we could bridge that gap and just kind of communicate and say, you know, in advance, well, in advance, these are the communities or the demographics being represented, so that people can kind of affiliate and associate with, oh, okay, America's being represented, or, you know, Europe's being represented, however you want to message it. And I don't know what folk dances Europe or America have, but you get what I'm saying, just to where it feels more inclusive for everybody, and it's just more dictated on what to expect on that. So then, you know, kind of going back to what was shared previously here without going in the weeds, is like the full inclusion of everybody on a single date, you know, regardless of Juneteenth and 4th of July, you know, let's move past that. This is what the, this is what the Parks and Rec has suggested, this is what's worked in the past two years. So moving forward, maybe we can all talk offline about our thoughts on how programming's going, but for now, you know, I'm, my only question is like for the, my only feedback is for like the 7 to 9 Music in the Park, for what we spend in a single day, and that being a very hot day where people stay indoors, not doing anything. I feel like we could kind of push the boundaries and risk some 9:30 noise complaints by extending an extra half hour and getting our money's worth, but that's just me. Yeah, thanks.
If I may, as a point of clarification, our Juneteenth is already planned for this year because it's already been approved in the current budget. So this proposed calendar starts July 25.
So this year's...
This is Q3.
This year's Juneteenth has already been approved and in the current budget.
So that's why it didn't show up in this particular budget cycle, because we planned on it.
Right.
And, no, I do have a comment.
Vice Mayor Tingle.
No, I appreciate your comment, Councilmember Disco, and I believe that was the same thing that I had said earlier in concurrence on that, is that more information from all cultures, and you're basically saying the same thing. Is that not correct? You were agreeing with me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that wasn't additive, but you were agreeing with me, thank you.
So maybe more marketing?
More marketing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor?
Or just more confluence on what it entails?
Councilmember Harrison, and then Councilmember Disco.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
On the calendar, or it says, June 20th Music in the Parks Celebration, Juneteenth for June of 2026.
Correct.
Okay. So this is 2025, so you said that 2025 has already been approved?
Right, it's already in the current fiscal budget.
Okay, I'm talking about 2026.
Right. I just want to make sure you weren't, didn't think that would be this, Juneteenth.
Okay. Disco, did you have another comment? Anybody else? Okay, so if there are no other comments or discussion, I do need a motion to approve the calendar.
Well, Mayor, are we going to look at, you know, with the time as far as the Music in the Park, for the, not Music in the Park, but for the Christmas event to be on a Saturday? Maybe versus Friday, or?
You make a motion on whichever you think is better.
You know?
Well, yeah, if there's something that needs to be determined, you would make a motion saying calendar plus Saturday event, or calendar plus Friday event?
Okay.
Or we discuss it more. I mean, so far, everybody has said Saturday, so I figure that's what the motion was going to be. Nobody has spoken against Saturday, so.
I just want to, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to build on the fact that our high school is heavily involved in the Tracy Parade, so I feel like we could have a little bit of discussion on whether Sunday's a viable option, but it's, that's my opinion.
Or does it even have to be the same weekend as Tracy?
It rained the following weekend this year.
Or like you can predict that?
Well, it kind of rains every, every year a little bit in the middle of December.
I believe the second Saturday is the annual Jeep Parade, which is very successful here in town as well.
But we can move that. Oh.
That could be moved to the first, I mean, I just don't want to conflict with the Tracy one, since the vendors and the high school.
We'd even, we'd even discussed with Rex possibly incorporating the Jeep Parade with somehow Pied Pipering to the...
Keep in mind, too, that typically a tree lighting or the light up is typically a way to kick off the holidays, and by the second Saturday, things are usually kicked off by then.
Santa's already been in 12 malls.
Yeah.
So then, the decision really is between Friday or Saturday, and maybe Sunday?
Sometimes holiday events occur the weekend after Thanksgiving, that is also something to consider.
Is there another weekend there?
There is one weekend before.
Let's see. So we could potentially move it to...
Black Friday weekend?
November, November 29th.
Yeah.
Or the 30th, right? That's a possibility.
But we'd probably see a drop with the amount of traveling that happens and people getting back on Sunday of Black Friday.
There's no perfect weekend.
No.
So the council just needs to make a decision on the current weekend, Friday, the current weekend, Saturday, the current weekend, Sunday, or a different weekend. Those are the four choices.
I'm leaning towards Saturday, no matter, no matter when it is.
How about Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, I think it should stay on Saturday.
Saturday? Councilmember Green?
Doesn't matter.
To you. Councilmember Disco, Ernest?
Well, if it doesn't matter to her, doesn't matter if you and I choose Sunday, so I would just say let's keep it Saturday.
You're going to choose Sunday, or?
I would suggest people exploring the option of Sunday, just because of the amount of families that I heard had to be at the parade in Tracy because of the high school's involvement with band cheer, any athletic group that participated, you know, that's where the eyes are historically, and that's where those groups, you know, if we could figure out a way to do our own holiday parade, then we would have our own high school represented in that holiday parade, and then we could invite the Jeep Club and whoever else to do a Pied Piper parade, just like we do for 4th of July to a festival, but it's, again, this isn't an evening on a weekend, and it kind of has to be dark to be worth it, and we don't have the brightest of lights on Central Park, so I don't know if it's feasible yet. But I would, if all else fails, I would default to Saturday.
All right, let's just stick to Saturday for now, that current weekend. Any other things we have to do?
Music in the Park, August 16th until 9:30, because it's a two-hour, August 2025, this August, currently slated for two hours, but...
You want to go to 9:30?
I mean, it's one of those, it's one of those months where everyone's so boxed in, hiding from the sun and the air conditioning, that they probably wouldn't mind being out of that house an extra half an hour, and if we're already paying for the infrastructure of something that's typically three hours, let's at least get...
Well, why not to the July 19th Music in the Park, too?
Oh, yeah, both of those. Sorry, I missed that.
I think for consistency, it is a good idea. People get out, and once you're out, two hours can go by pretty rapidly, especially since the programs are planned so well and people get involved, and the music is fantastic. So just have it, all of them from 7:00 until 9:30.
All of them being there?
All of the Music in Parks.
Oh, right, because the cultural, yeah, the cultural events are extended.
Everything until 9:30.
I mean, we'll have an amphitheater soon, and then we can make all the noise we want until 10 o'clock, so.
All right, so they want us to change all the Music in Parks, including the Juneteenth, to end at 9:30?
Okay.
I mean, unless Parks and Rec has any feedback on repercussions from noise complaints and things.
No, no. Our park ordinance is till 10 o'clock anyway, so.
More work for Laura.
The only thing I would recommend, well, is that May is kind of one of those dark, chilly Music in the Parks. It might be kind of late, so if you want to move that one earlier, I would recommend that. But to be consistent, it would be nice if they were all the same time.
That's what I'm thinking, consistency, so people don't have to think what 9:30 and the time.
And you're going to be, you're going to be contracting sage lighting for all of these ones anyway, right? Going that late, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, 7 to 9:30 for all these.
We'll bring heat lamps for May.
All the events, well, not, not, not all the events, all the events will move to 9:30 end time. Some of them start earlier.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so that was the second thing. Do we have to decide, do we have to decide anything else? I think there was one other to be determined.
We'd like, Councilmember Harrison wants to add Veterans' Day as well.
Yeah, for the, you know, Veterans' Day, for that to be added to the calendar.
On Veterans' Day, or?
You know what, I could support that, like, could we explore something like a pancake breakfast, where we find a beneficiary and do fundraising?
Well, I'm sorry, Matt?
I said, I said I would, I would be inclined to supporting something like Veterans' Day if we could make it a pancake breakfast or something, where we could do fundraising for a local veterans organization?
We don't fundraise.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Cities don't fundraise.
I don't think we're allowed to.
Oh.
Not as a city, but what I'd like to see maybe is, in past, with we've had, it seems like because Veterans' Day, there's a lot of people that still have to work, and I know a lot of veterans couldn't come because they have to work. So if we did it, I'd like to see if, if the board approves that we have it on a Saturday.
When is Veterans' Day on a Monday?
It's always on the 11th.
It's always on the day.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Wednesday this year.
So do you want the weekend before or the weekend after?
I would probably say the weekend after.
11th.
Just on a Saturday, just because it's...
Well, when you, if you had something like MLK or Labor Day, you would celebrate, even though the holiday's on a Monday, you would typically celebrate the weekend leading up to it.
But this is on a Tuesday.
So that's what I'm saying, you would roll it back to like the Saturday or the Sunday.
We can, that's, that's...
Same thing with like a holiday event, you know, Christmas, you're not going to celebrate Christmas with a holiday event after.
November 8th. Okay.
Okay.
So that's the third item, right?
Yeah.
Come up with something for the veterans.
So we'll do it the Saturday before Veterans' Day.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Sponsored by the city.
Sponsored by the city.
Okay, I can agree with that.
And we can work out the details of the event later when we start planning.
We do take sponsorships and we, I mean, we have...
Sponsorships, yeah, that's a little bit different.
But we don't collect money.
No, but, yeah, if you want to fundraise, you need either a foundation or a nonprofit to host.
And we did sell things, sell breakfasts, the breakfast thing, I mean...
It was not a fundraiser, though.
I know, but it's just semantics, right?
Revenue.
Did, was that, was that a profitable, the Santa's event, was that a profitable fundraiser for the Parks and Rec Department? Like, did it break even and then some?
I don't have those figures available, but I'm going to say it's probably about 50% cost recovery.
Oh, so there was, ultimately, there was an expense involved.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, primarily food and decorations.
Okay, so the three...
So the fire department didn't charge us for cooking those pancakes, right?
Okay, so moving forward, the three things we decided, Veterans' Day celebration, the Music in the Park, end time, I already forgot the third thing.
Veterans.
Holiday.
Oh.
Holiday Saturday.
Is the Saturday...
The Saturday.
The current Saturday.
The first Saturday of...
Tree lighting.
Now, are you doing the breakfast then the same day or the next, next weekend?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And then, Councilmember Harrison, you made the comment of wanting to, I guess, pull the Music in the Park for Juneteenth, and I think that...
Well, if it's already been approved for this, this year's, you know, like I said, my whole thing, and it's not against Juneteenth, I'm just saying I just don't want to see us as a city get into a bind where, you know, hey, we get some organizations saying, you know, hey, you know what, you know, Asian Independence Day, or Mexican or Hispanic Independence Day, why can't we have our own Music in the Park celebrating us? That was my, the whole thing was just lump them all together and stuff, you know? If that's the way to, you know, I said my comment, and that's it, if the, if the board...
Anybody else support removing that event?
I don't support removing it, I'm wondering what, how it's fueled. I mean, is there organizations that are fueling this to, that it would be pulled?
Council, Vice Mayor Tingle, there's a question posed, is anybody else going to support removing that event? No, okay. So again, we don't have the majority. Okay, so we have those three changes that we proposed, can I get somebody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Can I get a second?
...the changes.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
What about the Andy Sue celebration?
Cancelled, cancelled.
Marching Hare is unanimous?
That's the next item on the issue.
I want my, my, yeah. All right, moving on. Number nine is City Council Discussion Items, 9.1 Strategic Plan Scheduling and Priorities.
Margaret, can you put up the long range calendar, quickly? So I decided not to impose a PowerPoint on this very brief item, which was, since 2016, the, the entity that has sat up here, both the CSD in the past, has always had strategic, has had a strategic plan in place. Over the last six years, the, the standard practice has been that with each two-year city council or board cycle, so a, a update session is held to review the existing strategic plan, and then to go through that in a, in a study session, and then bring it back to the governing board for approval, and then that would guide kind of the priorities of the governing body for the next two years. And so, A, we're recommending, and so we've attached to the staff report, the existing strategic plan that was adopted by the CSD Board in 2023, and in addition, based on discussions we had as part of my performance review, I've also got in there, just for your review, what you had recommended as sort of our items of priority for the remainder of this year, which are also things that we would talk about at the strategic planning session. But the only thing that I am requesting tonight is that we take a look at the long range calendar, and hope that we can set aside a couple hours in the next 30 to 60 days to review the existing strategic plan, so that we can update it, and it's probably in more need of update than it ever has been, because we got a lot more than 18 powers now.
Okay, the team building, I thought it was 5 to 7. Did somebody change that? I wrote down 5 to 7.
It should be 5 to 7. I need to probably update it on here.
Okay, it is 5 to 7.
Correct.
So now, just trying to figure out a date that we can, the, the last couple times we did it, we did it in mid-February, but that's back when we only had one meeting a month, not two meetings a month and all. But February probably makes more sense, because March, we're looking at the Planning Commissioner Training, two city council meetings, and then the week we don't have a city council meeting, I don't have, I'm getting all the information from Laura, but the State Recreation Conference is in Sacramento, and there might be the opportunity, if anybody wanted to go up for even a day, it might be helpful to go up the, you know, as we're looking at additional equipment in our parks and things like that, the State Recreation Conference has an exhibit hall that basically is better than Disneyland when it comes to seeing what is all the state-of-the-art equipment for parks, and it has seminars as well. But in any case, potentially, depending on your, in what events you're going to in March, it seems like next month, there's probably more bandwidth than there's gonna be in March, or it has to be April. So is there a day, a weekday, and, or whenever you'd like, in February, that makes sense? You can see we have meetings on the 12th and the 25th. Remember, we had to move the 26th meeting to the 25th.
What about the 19th?
That's, again, so it's up to you as a board.
It's for strategic planning.
Yeah, so it'd be a two-hour session to update the strategic plan.
Yeah, and I would have to start probably at 7, because we have practice still close to 6. 7 to 9. Wednesday, is the, the Wednesday in between the two meetings? How about Harrison? Good. Disco, Ernest? Tingle? Okay, good. You're the last one, Disco.
Something about the 11th, rings a bell in a second.
You're not in Vegas that week.
This is my cousin's birthday, but I'm losing relatives, she may not even be here.
7 to 9. Disco?
Wait, February, are you talking about 12th, moving, 12th to the 19th? I'm lost. One week back?
Nope.
The week between the meetings on the 19th.
For what?
For a strategic planning session.
Ah.
It's not three Mondays. It's Wednesday, Wednesday, Tuesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Tuesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Tuesday. Yeah.
I have, why do I have February 19th for?
Did you say 7 o'clock?
Yeah. Well, Matt hasn't confirmed it yet, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I have, I have Cal City Hotel reservations showing on that date, but yeah, I'm clear, 19th.
You're clear on the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's make it the 19th, 7 to 9 p.m.
Why doesn't anybody want to do it on the 14th?
We did that last time.
I love you guys. Will you be my Valentine?
It gets me out of having to go to a dinner.
We actually did do it on the 14th two years ago.
19th is a Wednesday. Nothing is on there, whatever. The third meeting is on the 25th instead of the 26th. That's a Tuesday.
Correct.
What's on the 11th?
Could you pull the calendar back a minute?
Oh, okay.
We don't have anything on the 11th. It's Wednesday for the first meeting, Wednesday for this meeting, we're scheduled, and then the second council meeting is on a Tuesday, because I had a conflict on Wednesday. Yeah, it's, okay, so Steve, we got the date and time, 7 to 9. That's it. Do you need anything else? What was that called again, strategic?
Plan Retreat.
Retreat. Make it sound all fancy. Gonna be a turkey sandwich.
Right here.
Eagle Lakes.
Put up some palm trees or something. All right, are we good with that item, or you have more?
Mayor, did you, did someone say that the council meeting for February 12th been moved to the 11th?
No.
It's still on the 12th.
Still on the 12th, and then 19th, it's the 26th one that got moved to the 25th.
Got it, okay.
The only reason you see the 11th on your calendars, that's the Yak meet, we put the Yak meetings on your calendar, long range calendar as well.
All right, we're gonna get a utility billing update from Sarah, 9.2. Come on up, Sarah. 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds to walk up.
Yeah. That's not what I meant.
Sarah, you take all the time you need.
My bladder's gonna explode. See, it's broken. Broken.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. If I knew I only had 30 seconds, I would have been sitting here when you called this item. Anyway, I won't take very long.
You're down to 25.
Oh, okay. So, I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we stand with the conversion to our new utility billing system. And I know you'll remember back in September, the council approved an agreement with I-3 vehicles to provide the, what we call the back office administration for the utility billing system. And you also approved the addition of two full-time positions, office assistant twos, to help bring customer service in-house. So an update on that, you know, we've, we've, of course, signed the agreement with I-3 vehicles, and we're working with training on their software. In November, we hired the first office assistant, and that person has been receiving training on the Mountain House rules and regulations, so to speak, for utility billing, and also becoming, you know, familiar with the software. The next office assistant will be starting next Monday, January 13. So our staff's been working with the new software, and also gaining some deeper understanding of the type of work that the previous vendor did in terms of customer service. We always have received questions, and, and complaints, and, and whatever from customers, but the, now we're bringing in-house some of the tasks that we didn't have to be so hands-on with, like setting up new accounts, or transferring accounts from a, a previous owner to a new owner. We have already started some outreach. We had messages on the November and December billing, and we're gonna have information on our website and on social media. At this point, all we can really say is, changes are coming. We will give specifics as they become available, but just to, so no one is surprised when those specifics are announced. And some of the methods we're using, utility bill inserts, website and social media, we're gonna send emails to our customers to, to remind them that these changes are going to come. Even, it is, is a bit repetitious, but it doesn't hurt, because everybody gets information different ways. And then we'll be sending emails to our customers who use recurring credit card payments, just to let them know that in the future, they'll be, they'll need to update their credit card information for the new software. And some of the updates that we're gonna communicate, when they become available and, and useful to start, would be the new address for mailing payments, and a reminder that they're gonna have to change their credit card payment information in the system to, for the new program. Those, we're gonna wait until those things, we have a definite date, because we don't want to give out that information too early, because if people use it before it's available, it would be very confusing. We will have a, a system where the phone calls, if they call the old number after the new one becomes operational, will be forwarded automatically. So it, it, you know, should be fairly seamless to people who are trying to contact us, that they will be able to, you know, to reach us. Again, initially, we're just giving out general information, so people can be aware and be looking for that information. We'll put that information on the website and social media as it is updated, and, and it'll be linked back to our website and such, and to the, our billing update, our billing website. And then after we implement the changes, we'll repeat the messaging, just for those that maybe didn't make, you know, noted it and, and didn't realize it was changing. So our first billing under the new software is planned for March. We expect the bills will look fairly similar. The timing of everything is, is the same, because we're following the Mountain House rules. Infomarc, you know, our previous billing and collection vendor, is, will assist with the conversion to the new billing system, and that will be very helpful to us. Support calls that go to Infomarc are gonna be redirected to us. If the, someone mails their payment to the old address by mistake, it will be forwarded to the correct address. And when people contact the website, the old Infomarc website, they'll have a notice, and it'll go to another, I gotta write down that, what they call that, the, the URL portal for Mountain House will change, and it, this, people won't see this, the customers don't see this, but it's going, going to change from an Infomarc portal to a Mountain House portal. So it should be, you know, fairly seamless to our customers, and that's what we're hoping for. And again, we're working on, with Amanda and Communications, and anything that comes up, we're gonna update what we have on social media and the website, just to keep it fresh, keep it completely up to date. We'll encourage folks to contact us if they have questions. And, you know, that helps everyone, because they come to the people who actually have the information, and it helps us understand what isn't being communicated well enough at that point. So, anyway, that's all I have. I know I went over my 30 seconds.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Just a little bit. Any questions from the, the, Councilmember Harrison?
It's, Infomarc, they bill like with the water and stuff, right, I meant. So, folks that have that thing, is it called Eye on Water, or something like that, will they have to re-request? Because I'm thinking there's, you're gonna have a new account number, or no, or?
I'm not sure if the account number's going to change. I'm not clear on that, but we will still have access to Eye on Water. And we've been talking with Karen's folks, I guess Karen left, but her people that are working the plant will still assist with those tasks. We'll get the readings, and the, there's, there's gonna be a little crossover of information between Eye on Water and our billing system, but it will, we intend to keep it totally current.
Thank you, sir.
That's an excellent question.
How about, do you have another question?
No, I'm interested in making sure that Eye on the Water stays on, because it's helpful to a lot of people. That's an excellent question, and thank you that it's going to.
Councilmember Disco?
Sorry, in your 30-second rush, you said only one of the two employees have been onboarded, the second is now coming online?
Yes, the second one is gonna start next Monday.
So Ms. Gru3 is an Infomarc employee, and then Diane's the one you onboarded? No, separate.
No, we, we, we're gonna hire two office assistants. One started in, in November, and the next one, it took a while longer to recruit that second one.
Got it.
And, but they're starting on Monday.
I see, okay, thank you.
And Diane is still here, she's our, our billing supervisor.
Okay, so the other person is just an Infomarc, are we still splitting support with them right now?
No, no, it's our, our people, our employees.
It is, okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
9.3 is our city manager update. Steve Pinkerton, you got 20 seconds.
And, and by the way, I'll check with Amanda, but tonight was our, because I don't think she put this in the PowerPoint, because we weren't sure it was gonna work or not, but we are live on YouTube tonight, from now on. So, if everything else breaks in the, on our system, you can now go to the City Mountain House page, and, and click right on it, and you guys are on YouTube now. And you can re-watch as well.
You didn't warn us.
Yeah, you should have warned us.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't powder my nose.
We were gonna add some more lighting and everything else, so.
All right, Steve, you're down to 15 seconds.
And new nameplates, all right, keep going.
You had a question?
Yeah. Amanda, does that mean that if we have so many hits, because don't people on YouTube, they get money for like all these hits they get, so are we gonna get some revenue for that?
Hey, if we bring the bank, man, that would be great.
You would be the first city ever to do that.
Moving on. Steve, now you're down to 10 seconds.
All right, down to 10 seconds. All right, next slide, please. Just, again, reminding everyone that you might want to cross over the bridge to nowhere. We've got 60-plus building permits pulled, a lot of concrete being poured out there, a lot of sticks going in the air. They started marketing just before Christmas, they've already sold 10 homes, and they have 12, the first 10 they put up for sale sold, so they got 12 more for sale now, in all four different product types that they're selling up there. They have 503 houses total that they're gonna be building, and, what's that? No, they've got the models almost completed. They've got the models almost completed, if you go up there. There's, there's a, there's a, eight models for, there's a total of 16 different product, and eight of them are being modeled, and they're finishing up the models as we speak. If you go out there, you can tell which ones are almost done. It's right up against Central Parkway. And we're also doing a lot of work, if, if you go to the other end of Nazar Golee, not the Costas School End, but the other end, you see, in our one hillside project, a lot of dirt being moved out there as well, at the, where TriPoint Homes is working. You don't, that one's not as easy to see as the Pulte project, and it looks like Kaufman &amp; Broad is purchasing the one parcel that Pulte doesn't have directly adjacent to the new park. It is gonna be built by Pulte, or by KB Homes, and they've also are in escrow for the land next to the community, the community park as well, those 61 lots. Up in Neighborhood J, you're also seeing, if you can go up there, and you can kind of tell now where all the open space is gonna go, and Vander Tulon, the same folks who designed the park you're at today, they're doing, they're finishing up the open space plan for the open space that's gonna be adjacent to the Lennar lots. MHD is just wrapping up some of the rest of the open space where the. where the community park's gonna go, and they're also putting in some rather large water features now up at the north end of Neighborhood, probably larger than what you saw in the drawings, to go along with the lake shore theme, of course. They're gonna put some small lakes in. And Mustang Square, we'll get you some more information next meeting. My understanding is they're still working on undergrounding, and, you know, you don't, it seems like nothing's happening because it's mostly happening under the ground. The landscaping for the Delta Water Tanks was finally completed, which you just have no idea how long it sometimes takes just to find the right boulders for it to, that will, on hillsides, it's a little trickier to get things maintained. Grantline Road is, is pretty much officially done, as Jerry mentioned today, within the city. And the pedestrian bike paths up in the Cordis neighborhood and at the southern end of College Park are pretty much complete, and you should see grass growing in the spring. I don't know if you walked along those or not, but they're pretty impressive. The, the Mountain House Shopping Center, that is in the Hanson neighborhood, is very close to having permits for construction. Tulip Kids Daycare over in Questa, they're trying to move as quickly as possible on their project, so we're trying to work with them to get their building permits as soon as possible. Safari Kid is almost done. That's right. Now, Amanda, remember, it's kid, not kids. I get that wrong every time. It's Safari Kid. They're only gonna have one kid in that giant building, but it's Safari Kid. Right, it's Tulip Kids and Safari Kid. And then Wickland Crossing, which is the second commercial parcel over there in Wickland, I think they're finally at the point where they've got just the right-sized building that they can have enough parking, you know, that they were working on a final balance between how big a building can we build and still have enough room for parking on the site. And I think they've found that magic formula now. And I think they're looking at some sports-oriented uses in that building. We'll know more soon. Fire station, it's gonna be effectively complete in about two months, and then all the, the additional preparations are gonna be underway for the balance of the fiscal year. Very soon, we should have the pump station ready to go because if we want the toilets to flush in those model homes, there's gotta be a pump station there. And Central Parkway down in College Park, we should hopefully finally get everything, we've got more and more getting turned over in College Park so that we can do more code enforcement if necessary out there. So, we're getting very close in College Park. Monitoring well. We already talked about that a bit with Karen, and we wanted you to see all those different clay layers again. We wanted to make sure you got to see all, how different the dirt is, the deeper you go into the ground there. Through about November, not including north of Byron, but south of Byron, we're at 266 permits issued and 422 finalized this year. The reason the finalize is so much higher is because of, the Aviara Apartments got finalized this year. But I think you'll see those numbers double over the next year as we've got seven, eight different home builders all moving dirt right now, getting ready to go. Creekside is about half-built out. Langston is nearly completely built out. And Bergamo, which is Neighborhood H, they should be built out any time now. And then we put this on here just so that it's, there's gonna be a test next meeting on what are the names of the new neighborhoods. And it's, IJKL is Lake Point, Lake Shore, Lakeview, Palm Lake. And then, and then Town Center, where we've got, beginning to see some potential projects coming into the Town Center as well, along, of course, with our, our rec center that we're working on right now. Amanda's working furiously on our branding guide for employees, and she's now distributing our community newsletter to all of our interested parties, and we're getting, every time we have an emergency, the folks on Facebook discover that everybody else has Everbridge, so they should have it too. We've got a couple recruitment, we've got one engineer recruitment going on. Our public works director's gonna start at the end of the month. And we've got a code officer and our customer service rep in utilities starting next week. And if you've noticed out in the lobby, we've got our, the county, we were cooperating with County Health to have a free healthcare product vending machine, and the COVID tests are going like hotcakes. I don't know if they're trying, pardon? The county does. County does.
Are they really going, are you being sarcastic?
No.
No, they're, okay.
They're going.
How often do they come? Because I saw it get ripped off the other night.
What do you mean ripped off?
Well, not ripped off, is that you can get as many articles that you want out there, so you could play the machine.
Right.
You can do what?
It doesn't take, it does not take long to figure that out. You get as many things as you want. So, how often will they come to, to restock it?
I'll find out. Do you know, Amanda?
Yeah, it's connected to the...
So, they'll be coming daily. That's good.
Well, we want to get that out there. And then our new business license portal is up and running, and please call the number above if you have questions about business license. And great news, 17 more applications received for crossing guards. So, we're hoping we can build that up over time. I figure we're already saving, what, about $200,000 a year in crossing guard costs? This could be another 200,000 a year savings in crossing guards. So, kudos to Amanda and Rex and the volunteers out there getting the word out as we build up our army of crossing guards at our schools. We're gonna need even more since we've got two more schools about to go under construction. And don't forget, we'll be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Day. And I know there's gonna be a private event out in the plaza at what time?
10 o'clock.
10 a.m. 10 a.m.
Is that your event?
10 to 11.
And happy to answer any questions.
I do have one question.
Question? Grace Mayor.
It's regarding the permits being pulled for Hanson. How many permits out there are considering, being considered for the Hanson Shopping Center?
It's, it's about the same size as the one over by the high school.
No, about how many people are, how many permits are being considered? You said there are permits that people, for businesses, how many are being considered?
We don't, we're just working on the actual building permit. None of the business permits yet.
Oh, okay, I guess I was getting ambitious. I thought maybe we were taking people who wanted to...
No, no business is yet.
I just didn't want it to turn into what I call one of the pink collections, that warehouse that's empty.
I don't think they'll get financing if they're doing that, so...
All right, moving, we're moving on.
Can we ask the county for norovirus test kits as well?
I don't know if they have those.
No.
But we are, we are continuing to monitor our wastewater, and so we need to get that back into the, the updates here because we are still testing for COVID, flu, and some other things in our wastewater, so we can track locally. The, the grant went away, but we're continuing to do monitoring for, so... What's that?
We're moving on to item 10, future agenda items.
Future agenda items, yes. We've, we're working furiously to get all the items ready for the 29th. Don't forget, we have training January 22nd, 23rd, and 24th up in Sacramento. And so, we've moved the city council meeting to January 29th. We're gonna try to get as many of these on as possible at the next meeting, but I think our mid-year budget adjustments, we're probably gonna move out to February 12th.
Did you ask the sheriff for the data that I asked for? Not yet.
The...
The tickets? Oh, he's there? I can't see that far.
Yes, he's there.
We'll, we'll talk about, well, I, just...
Tickets, data, okay.
Yeah. We want more data.
Right, we've talked about that, but with, with him here, we can talk about it some more.
Okay.
So, any other, any other items you need on the long-range calendar? We've got a very busy couple months ahead with meetings nearly every week.
I have my glasses on, so I can't see anything.
So, again, we've got training on the 22nd, council meeting on the 29th, council meeting on the 12th, strategic planning on the, on the 19th and the 25th. Oh, and next Tuesday, we have our team building. So, we have...
Oh, you left that out.
Seven of the next eight weeks, we have at least one meeting, I believe, if I'm doing my math right. Skip to March, and we've got, March, we've got the Planning Commissioner training. Margaret signed everybody up. If you can make it, please confirm with Margaret. It's up in Santa Rosa for three days for the Planning Commission training, March 5th, 6th, and 7th. And then you can see, we've got our council meetings on March 12th and March 26th. And the recreation conference, we haven't put on there yet, but the California Parks and Rec Society Conference is in Sacramento. And again, that's one where typically people maybe sign up for one day. It's the 14th through the 18th, and we'll be getting that information out soon. 18th through the 20th, I knew 18, I had the 18, right?
Come on, Steve.
18th through the 21st.
April.
No, that would be March 18th through 21st.
March?
The CPRS, the recreation is March 18th through 21. It's March, correct? Yes.
I won't be going to that one.
Okay. So, we'll get that information out to you, and if there's any interest, you can coordinate with...
The Santa Rosa meeting?
Yes.
For the Planning Commission? I assume if you don't go, you're gonna, you can still be, make decisions, but it's gonna be...
This is just pure training, not certification. This is just, because you do a lot of, the, the discussion was it will help you determine long-term what role you want the city council to play in the planning process.
Okay.
Every city's a little different in what they do.
9 o'clock. All right, what else?
That's it.
Thanks, Steve. Do I have any council brief comments?
Yeah, I do, just, just...
Council member Harrison.
Yeah, about 22 minutes worth.
20 seconds worth.
I'm only, I'm only kidding. Thank you.
It's 9 o'clock. Past my bedtime. Oh, you're done. Council member Green.
That's not a good joke.
That's ignorant.
You have, you have something?
I just wanted to say, you know, Happy New Year to, to everyone, and let's just make this the best year possible for our new city.
Yep. Council member Green? The other council?
Now, thank you guys so much for everything that you do.
Council member Disco Ernest.
Welcome back, staff, and hope you guys had a great holiday. Also, want to give a shout-out to the Mountain House Fire Department for supporting Parks and Rec and doing a great job coordinating the pancake breakfast. And also, shout-out to the Parks and Rec team for decorating and putting on a wonderful first annual, on its own weekend, breakfast with Santa. That's all.
How about a shout-out for all the residents that are actually still here?
Thank you, residents, for selling out two different breakfasts that day and for coming out tonight.
We've increased our attendance by like 6,000 percent. Yeah. City attorney, you get two seconds.
I have no report.
City manager, you already had your comment.
I, I meant to mention that Chief Cornellson is down in Southern California helping out right now.
Oh, with the, yeah, I figured. And adjourn to a special meeting on January 14th. Oh, that's our team building. What is that? Five to seven? Five, five to seven? Five to seven, open to the public, and we're gonna get food from a little taste of culture.
So, if there weren't enough fist blows tonight, come next week.
Adjourn to January the 14th, 5:00 p.m. for our special council meeting, team building.
I don't think we need to do that anymore.
Why not?
They said we don't have to make a motion.
Who's they?
Margaret.
Would have been, would have been different if there was steak and crab.
Huh?
Would have been different if there was steak and crab.
No, we don't have to make a motion to adjourn anymore. I can just adjourn the meeting.
Well, let's go. What are we still standing here for?
All right, let's go. Meeting adjourned.
Okay, we can leave anytime. Outta here. I'll have to tell the kids that they don't have to make a motion to adjourn.